One minute. A second. Sure. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is six o'clock on the 18th of March 2024, and this is the meeting of the regular, regular meeting of the District 882 Monticello School Board. I first, before we rise for the pledge, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight. We have a very large crowd. It appears that a lot of our staff members are here tonight and hopefully in the overflow room too as well. So I just want to welcome everybody and say, come more often. So please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move into our regular agenda. You'll be able to see that projected up on the board for anybody that doesn't have a copy of it electronically. Our first item of business is to approve the tentative agenda for our meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We do have one citizen's comment tonight. For those of us that, those of you that are with us for the first time, we don't often have citizens' comments, but when we do, they sign up ahead of time. They're given a three-minute block of time. We project a timer up on the board while they're speaking, and there's usually no conversation back and forth with the board. So they're addressing the board. It's not a conversation. Some people are a little confused about that. So we'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. David Decker, and you have three minutes, and thank you for coming.
Good evening. Tonight I am talking about the school budget. Last month, okay, I'll say, I grew up in the Monticello School District. I live in Monticello Township. I attended school in here. This used to be the library. Last month, Tina told us about the finances, a financial deficit for the school year 25-26 of approximately $3 million. My heart kind of sank when I heard that. In January, I went to the Legislature Forum at the St. Michael Middle School, and there heard about their financial situation. A student said that they're not able to take as many foreign language classes as other schools in the late conference. St. Michael participates in the late conference. A teacher got up and said that they had to take on another class during this school year because a teacher quit during this school year that we are in right now. And I believe that teacher had to give up their prep hour, and Eric and Kathy, you might remember better, I didn't take any notes that night. So they're having a tough situation in St. Michael. In the February 29th edition of the Union Times, the Princeton Superintendent states in his headline for his article, "Navigating Unprecedented Budget Challenges." My aunt started teaching in Princeton in 1945. This is her behind her class of 33 students in the fall of 1945. That wasn't the only year that she had a big class. She has told me that she's had at least one, if not two, years where she had 40-plus students in her class. She taught primarily first and second grades. And she also told me of times in Princeton where she had to teach in a portable classroom. They didn't, and a portable classroom is not a permanent structure. In order to take her students to the bathroom, she had to take her students outside and go to the main building to take her students to the class, to the bathroom. What a challenge that they had. Tough situations, and they made it work. However, they could make it work. I played in the, in the band here at Monticello, and later in the marching band. We had a very good marching band in the 80s, very successful. Went to the Tournament of Roses Parade, and had a lot of success, but that band got cut. I've come to board meetings here, and I've learned that our superintendent is one of the lower-paid superintendents in the area. Our school board is one of the lower-paid school boards in the area. So there's, how do you cut things when there have been a lot of cuts? Buffalo Hanover Montrose is doing some big cuts that I just read about over the weekend in their Buffalo Insider. You talk about being cut on, having to cut staff over in Buffalo. Each of you board members and superintendent have some of my handouts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Moving on to item number five on our agenda today, tonight, is the fiscal stability. This is a consent agenda. For those that don't know what a consent agenda is, we receive the documents ahead of time. They're bundled together. We have about a week where we have the opportunity to ask questions and receive more information as needed. Then we move them as a group. And so we have the approval of minutes from March the 4th, Personnel Matters, Bill Summary, Bills, Pea Card, Amazon Card, and Wires.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to item number six, collaborative connections. We have a resolution every, pretty much every meeting. We are very blessed that we have a very supportive community. We have a lot of businesses and individuals and foundations that support us extremely generously with money for projects that we otherwise would not be able to accomplish. And so, just like in all of our other meetings, I'm always astonished to see the numbers that are on here. We do have more gifts this week, and Superintendent Olson will be discussing those.
All right. Well, first three are all donations going to our Monticello Boys Tennis Team. And the first is from our Monticello American Legion, Post 260 for $1,500. And then we have Richard Hanson, who also brought forward $1,500 for the Monticello Boys Tennis Team, and then the Northwest Area JCs of $1,500. And then the final one on this list is Medica, $1,000 for the Resiliency Conference coming up in, end of July here. I think it's great to see all of these on here. It just shows the community's support. It shows how active our relationships are with our people who run these programs. So thank you to the community. I had the chance to share with the school board, we have a big spring break for high school programming. We have three trips going on, so I just reminded everybody of that. And that kind of goes along with those first three, being that tennis trip to Florida. But our choir is also going to Chicago, and our baseball team is going to Arizona. And then later in the month, as I shared, we have our big trip to DC with our students. So probably stole some of the thunder coming up in the student report, but yeah, so I'll circle back here now for the resolution to the acceptance of these wonderful gifts.
Resolution will be read by Board Member Jeff Hegley.
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School District Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations: Monticello American Legion Post 260, $1,500 to assist the Monticello Boys Tennis Florida Trip, Richard Edwin Hanson, $1,500 to assist with the Monticello Boys Tennis Florida Trip, Northwest Area JCs, $1,500 to assist with the Monticello Boys Tennis Florida Trip, and $1,000 from Medica for donation for the Resiliency Conference.
Second.
Resolution is read by Member Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of accepting these donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And very gratefully passes six zero, and thank you to the community. We next have our student representatives with their report. We have Student Jack Geislinger and Gabby Cruz Longley that are going to update us on some of the things going on for our high school. So welcome to the podium, and good to see you guys again.
Hello, everyone. Big crowd today.
Move a little closer.
So first of all, this, we had snow week in mid-February. It was a great break to the year with a lot of dress-up days. We had a medallion hunt. And to end it all, we had snowball on Saturday.
So winter activities were wrapping up. So we had a lot of really great season this year for winter activities. And we had a lot of section games, a lot of section final games, and a couple of sports go to have some qualifiers for state, which was really cool. And so far this year with fall and winter sports, we've just been having a really great season.
It's also that time of year for registration for freshmen through juniors and also eighth graders. There is many informational meetings for them at which, well, we got a big turnout for all of them, and many questions about trimesters and how that was all going to work. And then there's even school tours with students leading them for the eighth graders.
Thursday last week, we had a flex night. So that's where a lot of the teachers stayed after school to help students. It's a really great opportunity for students. It's our second one we have, we've had, we have had this year, excuse me. And it's just a really good opportunity for students to catch up on work that is needed and provides them some one-on-one time with their teachers.
This week marks the end of third quarter, which means we're moving on to the fourth quarter, which is the home stretch for us seniors. It's very exciting, and there's a lot to do.
So last week, Friday, where our senior scholarships were due, so that's scholarships for seniors. It's the local scholarships that are handed out from the community. It was really a good opportunity for them. It's, I think last year there was 100 and something, like over 100 scholarships given. They try to get one to every student, but there's not always enough. But there will be an awards night next, on May 15th, to hand out those scholarships and to just give out awards for seniors.
We also start spring activities last week. It was very nice with the spring weather, no snow, so that was good for a lot of sports. As long as, more than just sports, we also had clubs starting. And we also have, as Mr. Olson said, a couple going on spring training over spring break.
Thank you very much. And does anybody have any questions for Gabby and Jack from the board? Okay, we'll see you guys next time. Moving on to our item C, we're going to have our Business Director, Ms. Tina Burkholder, give us a briefing on the Wright Technical Center's long-term facility maintenance plan, and that is a resolution for us and an action item.
So at our March workshop, we went over Wright Technical's long-term facility maintenance plan. That's where we, whether them or us as school districts, use long-term facility maintenance funds to help our existing building conditions, whether it's roofs, parking lots, doors, windows, carpet, painting, those sort of things. So since, what, eight or nine school districts are part of Wright Technical Center, they don't have land to access property tax for their long-term facility maintenance plan, so they pass that to us to collect and pass it through to them. So they need all the partnering school districts to pass a long-term facility maintenance resolution so that they can access some long-term facility maintenance funds for their projects. I believe ours was around $50,000, if I remember right. I'm not a resolution expert, but I believe normally there's something in bold.
Gotcha. Is there anything else you need to share?
No.
Resolution Wright Technical Center's long-term facility maintenance program budget authorized an inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Is that all you need? That's a bold part.
Be it resolved.
Be resolved by the School District of Number 882 stating Minnesota as follows. You want the rest of that? Okay. So all of it is what we want.
Go on.
Kevin, can you click on it, please? Can you click on the bold?
Okay. Be resolved by School District Number 882 stating Minnesota as follows. The School Board of Cooperative School District 966 has approved a long-term facility maintenance program budget for its facilities for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $406,592, of which District Number 882's proportionate share is $64,227.83. The various components of this program budget are attached in Exhibit A here too, and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved, Exhibit A. Minnesota Statute Section 123B. .53 subdivision 1, as amended, provided that if a cooperative school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the cooperative school district's member's school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the cost of the cooperative school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The proportionate share of the cost of the cooperative school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each member, school district to be included in its application shall be determined by multiplying the total cost of the cooperative school district's long-term facility maintenance program times a three-year weighted average adjusted pupil units formula. The long-term facility maintenance costs shall be funded through the annual levy instead of issuing bonds. The inclusion, inclusion of this proportionate share, the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for the fiscal year 2025 is hereby approved, subjected to approval by the Commissioner of Education. Upon receipt of the proportionate share of the long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to the cooperative school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the cooperative school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by...
Second.
Melissa Curtis.
And upon vote being taken thereon.
All those in favor of approving the long-term facility maintenance portion for District 882 for Wright Technical Center, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Resolution passes six zero. Thank you. Moving on to teaching and learning, we're welcoming to the podium Mr. Gary Revening, our Activities Director, who's going to give us a winter and spring activities update.
All right. Thank you. Couple times a year, I come to the school board with updates on activities. Jack and Gabby mentioned that we've had a fun, busy, exciting winter, and there's a lot of buzz around the school right now as spring sports are starting. So I'm going to give a quick update. Hopefully I won't miss anything as I go through all of our activities that we had starting back in November. And it's great to see all of our, quite a few advisors and coaches here today. If I get to your activity and you're here, I'd invite you to please stand up so we can recognize you as well. So, we started out back in November with our Fall Musical. And actually, before I even get going with that, Gavin helped with some of these slides. I want to thank Gavin Nelson and Jared Hines. I don't know if Jared is here today, but we started something called the Red Zone this school year, where we're doing updates once a month for the community. And Gavin's really the go for that behind the scenes, so thank you, Gavin. All right. Starting with our Fall Musical, Beauty and the Beast. It took place November 17th through the 19th. Our director is Dr. Nathan Herfindal. They did an outstanding job, and I personally think it was one of the school's best performances. So hopefully some of you saw our Beauty and the Beast performance in November. Moving on to one act, we advanced to the section final this year. We placed fourth overall in the section. It was the first year that we had a varsity and a JV one act. The varsity performed Fire Exit, and the JV performed Appropriate Audience Behavior. Varsity was directed again by Dr. Nathan Herfindal, and the JV by Spencer Gillian. First Robotics is still going on right now. Parker Dorn is in his second year as our advisor. We're currently building our robot, and we'll compete in April at the U of M. This year's competition is picking up rings and depositing them in lower and upper containers, and you get scores on how many rings you put in the containers. Knowledge Bowl, I do see our advisor, Courtney Roach, sitting over there, so please stand up. She's been working on increasing participation, and she's doing a great job. It's a big commitment for her and the kids. They compete on Saturdays throughout the They compete on Saturdays throughout the winter. And a highlight for us, our JV ended the season by placing fourth out of 17 teams. So, thank you, Courtney. DECA State Tournament, we just wrapped up last week. Our advisors, Kari Graberg, and we had four students represent us at the state tournament, which is awesome. Aria Williams, Amber Mariah, Sophia Roche, and Ella Miller all went to the DECA State Tournament. Math team, our advisors are Mrs. Schenzer and Mr. Ringel. We had a young team, but we had 17 participants this year. We competed in five meets. I missed something? Oh! Thanks for staying, and I'm very happy you're here. Brayden Ray, 11th grader, is our top scorer. He placed eighth overall in the division, which includes students from Elk River, St. Michael, Annandale, and Big Lake. Thanks, Mr. Ringel. Trying to go fast. Dance team, getting into the sports now. Coach Breon has this program competing at a high level. We are consistently in the top three in our conference. We placed fifth at sections. Three teams advanced to the state tournament. We just missed out on third place, and we return a strong senior class next year. So, our goal next year again will be to try to be the first dance team in school history to make it to the state tournament. Girls hockey, we co-op with STMA. We advanced to the section semifinal this year. We play in the late conference. We were very competitive this year, and Coach Bean was our head coach, and she was in her first season. Boys hockey, our coach is Coach Nelson. And we went undefeated again for the second year in a row in the Mississippi A Conference. We lost in the section final to Cathedral, who went on to win the state tournament. It was another fun season at the Moose Share at Ice Arena. And if you joined us for the semifinal game, and we defeated Little Falls, and I believe it was double or triple overtime, it was quite a fun night. Boys swimming and diving, another outstanding season, undefeated again in the Mississippi A Conference. We finished sixth in the state tournament. I do see Coach Sampson in the back. He's our diving coach. Earning all state in swimming, again, we took sixth at state. Paul Fosin was fifth in the 200 freestyle. Carson Colstrom was sixth in the 50 freestyle. Game McDermott is a diver. He finished fourth. And our 200 free relay was fifth at the state tournament, 400 free relay third. And overall, again, the team finished sixth. All of our coaches received section coach of the year. Dirk Westfier is our head coach. Amanda Urick is assistant coach, and John Sampson is our diving coach. So, congratulations, John. Wrestling, our highlight was sending two female wrestlers to state for the first time in our school history. Rose Angel Verrett, she's an eighth grade, and Jasmine Downer, she's a junior. Rose Angel placed fourth at state, our first female wrestler placing at the state tournament. Our boys had many place winners at sections, but no one advanced as an individual to state this year. I did see Coach Ziggan is one of our coaches. Thank you for being here. Gymnastics, first-year head coach Lisa Moran and her staff led our girls to an amazing season. We won the Mississippi A Conference and the true team state championship, and we were highly ranked all year. We were ranked in the top five almost the entire season. At sections, we finished second to Becker, who went on to the state tournament, and Becker won the state tournament. We had three gymnasts advance to state. Sophomore Lauren Hanson was third overall in the state tournament for individuals. Freshman Elena Beckland, Elena was 12th on the uneven bars. And eighth grader Sienna Zepeda, Sienna was 16th on the, or in the floor exercise. Assistant coach Will Theisun was assistant coach of the year for the entire state. So, congratulations to Will, I don't know if he's here, but it was a huge honor for him. Girls basketball, Coach Guyan is standing there. Thanks for being here. We placed second in the Mississippi A Conference. We advanced to the section final at St. Michael Albertville High School. Had an outstanding season, going 24 and 5. Coach Guyan was the section coach of the year. Congratulations. And we return a strong sophomore class next year, looking to advance to the state tournament. I saw last week in the Star Tribune, our leading scorer Samantha Voel was third-team All Metro. Huge honor for Samantha. She also scored her 1,000th point this year as a sophomore. Boys basketball, huge progress this year. Finished the season 11 and 16, coming off a one-win season last year. Coach Naumann was selected as section coach of the year because of our improvement that we showed throughout the season. We lost in double overtime to Becker in the first playoff game. Nice crowd at Monticello. We were the four seed, they were the five seed, and it was exactly what you want in a four or five matchup. Outstanding basketball game. The Coyotes, Coach Libesmeyer and Coach Zibo are doing a great job leading our sports program for, our adaptive sports. We're a co-op with Buffalo and St. Michael. We had another competitive season in floor hockey, same as adaptive soccer. We were one win away from the state tournament. So, they did an outstanding job again this winter. I'd like to introduce three recently hired new head coaches, and one of them is here. Corey Derby, thanks for being here. Corey is our new head boys track coach. Comes with a lot of experience. He's been on our staff since 1999. He's worked closely with Coach Wick. Coach Derby teaches industrial tech at the high school. He was a standout track athlete in high school, participating for Bertha, Hewitt, Vern Dale. Congratulations on your new position. Looking forward to working with you, Corey. Chad Heda is also here. Saw him walk in, he might be in the other room. But Chad Heda graduated from Monticello in 2014. He is our new head boys lacrosse coach. He was a standout lacrosse player for us, and he went on to play club lacrosse at NDSU. He is a two-time captain there. In 2018, they won the national championship, and he was a first-team All-American. He has spent the last four years as Buffalo High School's head coach, and Chad teaches at our middle school. Welcome, Coach Chad Heda. And our third, just hired last week, Tony Cortencamp. Is Tony here? All right. Tony, Coach Cortencamp, has been our assistant cross-country coach for 18 years, and he's taking over for our head coach this fall, replace it, or taking over as head coach this fall, replacing Coach Wick. Mr. Cortencamp teaches science at the high school. He's also on our track staff. Coach has been a lifetime runner. He's excited to take over our program. Congratulations, Coach Cortencamp. All right, spring sports preview. Like I said, there's a buzz at the high school right now. It's exciting. Baseball team, took third in state last year. They're looking to get back to the state tournament and win the conference. Softball, we have a lot of key players back, including our top pitcher. So, that's exciting. Boys golf, last year won the conference, looking to compete for a conference title and possibly state. Girls golf, I think we took third last year, looking to improve on that. Girls track, two-time defending state champs, so we're hoping to get back to the state tournament. Should have another strong season for them. Boys track, and Mr. Derby's first season, looking to do well at the state tournament and compete for a conference championship. Girls lacrosse, we're going to be young, but we're hoping to increase our participation numbers, and we'll start in two weeks. Boys lacrosse, looking to have a strong season, a lot of players returning from last year's team. Boys tennis, hoping to compete for a conference championship this year, and the coach is hoping to maybe make a trip to the state tournament. Trap shooting is just starting, and they're actually meeting tonight, and we have high participation numbers there. Adaptive softball, we're again with St. Michael and Buffalo. And looking forward to a fun adaptive soccer season, just like floor hockey and soccer. And finally, Coach Grams, I know is here for adaptive bowling. That takes place during the school, excuse me, during the school day. And looking forward to a fun adaptive bowling season as well. And finally, just wanted to point out, we received a grant from the high school league for a new AED that has arrived, and we'll be putting that out at softball complex. Any questions?
Just a comment, and I just am always flabbergasted at how many opportunities we have for our students in a district that's really not one of the giant ones in the Twin Cities. We do have so many opportunities for kids, both from fine arts and sports and everything in between. So, I just want to pause and take a moment to say how lucky we are and how fortunate we are to have that many opportunities for our kids.
And we wouldn't have them without the great advisors and coaches that we have, very fortunately.
So, thank you, Mr. Revenig. We'll see you next time. Moving on to item number eight, innovation and leadership. Mr. Olson and I are going to give a little bit of a legislative update. So, today, we've been going since very early this morning. We had a delegation of five members from the district, member Casey Root and myself from the board, superintendent Olson, business director Tina Burkholder, and HR director, Mr. Rob Daniker. The five of us attended the Day on the Hill for the Minnesota Association of School Boards and the Association of School Administrators or superintendents. And there, from my count, there was approximately 200 people in the room at the Radisson now, but the Kelly Inn this morning, the old Kelly Inn, if you know that hotel down there, it was just packed. And so, this is the second year those two organizations have done a mixed group Day on the Hill, and I thought it was really successful. We attended a committee member, a committee meeting of the Senate Education Policy Committee. Very interesting because it was a lot of the omnibus things in the governor's bill that were discussed today. And we met with one of our legislators from District 27A, which we, is Sherburne County side of the river, but we have roughly 1,800 or 2,000 constituents that are part of that constituency for 27A, House District 27A. And this morning, we had two panel discussions from Education Policy and House Policy, both from the Senate and the House, came and just spoke with the group, and that was really illuminating. It was, it was very heartening because they were very on, I mean, there was a lot of agreement across the board about funding issues and things that are, bills that are currently going on at the legislature. So, that was very encouraging to hear. There wasn't a lot of disagreement on that. So, do you want to?
Yeah, I think it's just important to always talk about the word advocacy. I think we all have a voice, and it's important to make sure that we use that voice. And a lot of times, it's the advocacy that often goes unnoticed because it's the things behind the scenes. But I know that even sitting here today, I know that recently SEIU has presented us with a letter in, in support of public education down at the, as they have been testifying down there to make sure that funding and policy is, continues to be a earmark for what we need to do in legislative sessions. So, we'll continue to make our voice heard and be able to share updates with you as they come along. But I just want to appreciate those of you that do take that seriously and make your voice heard. It seemed today, we had assistance comment who brought up lots of different ways of advocacy going around our area. We'll have a couple of news articles going in the local newspapers here coming up within the next week. So, we're trying to do what we can to make sure that education and our students and staff remain the priority and future of our state. So, thanks.
I'd also like to open it up to member Casey Root, who attended for the first time. Do you have any comments you want to make?
Yeah, it was good. It was good to see so many different people there. There was a lot of conversation in breaks when people weren't actually talking. We did go see the omnibus bill discussion with the rep. We talked about some of the limits we run into on the long-term facility maintenance, what we can do in that avenue, unemployment insurance questions that we, also some of the clawback on the curriculum update and the money that we spent on that if we're going to be able to recoup some of that in the future and invest it into the district as we were proactive in that, in that part. So, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, a lot of, a lot of things going on. It was a good day down there. Won't be the last day that we go down there. Just here to work with, you know, the board, and everyone's collectively doing what we can to make everyone successful.
Yeah, I'm just really proud of how involved our board is. We can all discuss, you know, pretty intelligently all of the bills that are in progress, and we're keeping up with that and trying to do the best that we can for our district and our staff and our students and our parents and advocate where we can. So, thank you all for coming tonight, too. That's advocacy as well, so we see you and we hear you. So, moving on to our building and program shout-outs, we have Mr. Gary Revenig, activities director, followed by our two high school principals, Mr. Matt Colwell and Ms. Lori Hanson. And then we're also going to hear from middle school principal Jeff Sherber and principal Amy Herfindall and interim assistant principal. So, you guys can go in whichever order you would prefer. And welcome to the podium, and thank you for coming.
And Gary did his, along with his presentation. So, we'll jump right into the high school. And just for anybody who hasn't seen this on the live stream or been here in attendance, a shout-out is something new this year, but it's really not new because buildings have been doing these for years. Who have I noticed? Staff shout-outs and, you know, we're just really trying to emulate the great things that are happening at the building level and make sure that they get noticed at the district level, too. And so, anytime that these happen, our new communications coordinator, Devaney Moore, sends out a certificate and announcement in the mail just to congratulate you on being recognized at a board meeting for a staff shout-out. So, take it away, staff shout-outs.
Well, on behalf of Lori and I, we want to thank you for the chance to come up here. I'm going to go off script a little bit, Devaney. You don't even know, listen, Eric, I didn't clear it with you, but... Lori thinks I'm going to recognize a certain birthday over the weekend, but I would never do that in front of a large group. We mentioned this at our last staff meeting, but Gary was gone. Gary received a distinguished service award from the Minnesota Inner's Classic Athletic Association or Administrators Association that I don't think many people knew about. And just watching him do his thing up here with the group, he puts a lot of passion into magic sports and activities, and all of us know that around it much. So, want to make sure we can recognize Gary just for his hard work and receiving that award that not many people have heard about until now. So, give him a round of applause. The reason, the other reason why we came, one Devaney doesn't know about, is we want to shine a spotlight on three people in particular who are sitting right over there. If you guys want to stand up quickly, this is our trio of high school counselors. Courtney, Julia, and Shelley have had a great year. This is their first year together as a whole, but they have been very busy as of late. Registration's a big deal at the high school on a normal year. This has not been a normal year with a lot of change that's taken place that we think is going to be for the better. They've put in a ton of time together, got to know each other very well this year, very dynamic. They complement each other very well, many, many, many extra hours. We want to publicly take time to thank the three of them for helping guide us through this, this school year in particular with all the change in registration and trimesters and start times and the credit count and all those things have been very helpful.
It would be easy for us to stand up here and truly recognize the whole high school staff because, as Matt summarized, the transition from the semesters to the trimesters is no easy lift. So, for us to sit up here, we should truly just identify everyone. These three have just taken all of the work that our staff have done collectively through the year and packaged it up to make it manageable for families, students, incoming freshmen, juniors. There's a tailored message for every stakeholder, including our own staff, our families, to make sure that they truly understand what it looks like to go from semesters to tries, grad credits, all of the things and the details that have not been lost on any of us. So, those three have really done a nice job of just making all of the information overload very manageable for all the people that need to know it, when they need to know it. And it's been very professional. It's been very well-received, and we've heard nothing but compliments and making a pretty big lift going into next year, very doable. So, they represent a collective high school staff that really just has worked very, very hard this year.
Hello and good evening. I, it is my pleasure today to lift up my colleague, Marcia Garretts, for her contributions to Monticello Middle School and to the community as a whole. Ms. Garretts is a master teacher. We've had a number of administrative substitutes in the building this... We've had a number of administrative substitutes in the building this year, because Rachel will be back on Monday, or next Monday, but we, we've had a bunch of people in and they've had the opportunity to observe her as we have and see the beautiful interactions that she has with students. She teaches with humility and models not only what she wants to see, but allows students to make mistakes with grace. She encourages participation at any level and ensures that her students are not only moving for the hour she sees them, but builds habits that can continue into their lives beyond Monticello Public Schools. As a coach, Ms. Garretts is a flexible leader who understands that quality playing time is far superior to, to short, ineffective moments on the court. She works to meet athletes where they are and continues to grow their skill set with future seasons at the forefront of all decisions. Ms. Garretts is an exemplary communicator with parents and guardians. When she feels that a student's adult should be contacted, she makes sure that families are aware with honesty and efficiency. She asks for support and for the input of the parent, making sure that parental voice is an equal partner in her next steps with the student. I'm grateful for Marsha's presence in our school district and our building and on a personal note in my daughter's life. Marsha radiates our star qualities at MMS, and her influence is felt far beyond the gymnasium. Marsha Garretts.
School Board members, Mr. Olson, and we just wanted, Amy and I knew that once we got a chance to shout out a few of our, our staff at the middle school, that we'd be shouting out about our new lease, put together instructional leadership team. We've got six individuals that stepped up tremendously this last year, and it's something different that we haven't done in the past. Instructional leadership is one of the hardest things to do as a principal, and to step up as a teacher is exceptionally hard to do as well. You're working with your colleagues, you're challenging them on instructional strategies and taking the lead. We've got six folks who've helped out. They meet a couple of times in the, six times during the year, and then they meet again as a group to kind of support each other. Jocelyn Hossleton has led our math team. Amy Herfindall here has led our social studies team. Caitlin Haller has worked with our science colleagues. Casey Munson has worked with all of our specialists. Joan Owen and Joy Hausman have worked with all the language arts and reading specialists. That last group, I mentioned Joy and Joan, I just want to share, just, they're doing double duty this year, along with having discussions on quality lesson plans and using data to drive instructions there, taking on a curriculum review and adoption process. Cindy and I were visiting the other day, that's a big deal. And this group, Joan and Joy, they've led that group. I've been very proud of the work that group has done, taking a look at all different curriculums, and they'll be in front of the board here to help share their decision on that. But that, that's going to involve setting aside some tried and true things that they've done in the past and embracing something new, which is risky and hard at times. But I'm very proud of all of them, in particular Joy and Joan, for their hard work. I'm excited to continue more work with these folks, and we've got a bright future with those folks on board. Thank you.
It was wonderful to hear the good things that our staff is doing. Sometimes we have a lot of difficult budget discussions and things like that, but I think it's really important to pause and really appreciate the people that are around you. So, we're trying to model a little bit more of that this year, and we hope that you can feel it, too. Moving on to item number E, we're going to welcome Ms. Tina Burkholder, Director of Business Services, to the podium to discuss some budget issues with us, budget assumptions for '24 and '25.
Just when I get used to one system, we switch it up, so.
Yay.
All right, oops. All right, so tonight, we are going to talk about our budget assumptions for the next school year, 2024-25. Let me move this little guy out of the way. There you go. Maybe. Oh, I could do that? What if I want to stop sharing? Okay, there we go. So, just a review as our budget timeline, in December is when we adopt our final levy, and that's for the '24-'25 school year. Also, in November, we look at our enrollment projections for the following year as well. January and February, we're looking at a financial forecast to see how the next couple of years are looking. And right now, March through May, we're looking at budget assumptions, looking at staffing projections, looking at capital, supply allocation, staff development, and kind of starting to put all those things together, and for the board approve in June of 2024, the next school year. So, starting in the budget assumptions, we look at enrollment, and there's the projection enrollment that looks at bodies in the buildings, so that includes our special ed cooperative students, and then also the budget enrollment, what we get funding for. So we don't get funding for the co-op students, that gen ed funding flows through to wherever the kids land. So our budget enrollment number is 4,091, so a little bit less than this year. For revenue assumptions, we're assuming that the general education aid will only increase 2% that was approved last legislative session, so we're not anticipating any new money added to the formula this legislative round. We have revised compensatory funds with higher enrollment for families eligible for free and reduced meal benefits. Our CARES, ARP, ESTER funds, whatever category you want to call them, are mainly spent, and so we won't have those the following year, but we do have other federal grants in place, the Grow Your Own, MTSS, mentorship, Intro to Education, non-exclusionary, just to add, to name a few. There's probably more coming, but that's what we have right now to help our budget. Staffing changes are based on enrollment projections and student needs, so overall, our classroom staffing is kind of same overall, just maybe shifting between different buildings. But for our special ed programs, we are seeing higher population of students with higher needs that are coming through our doors. Just speech alone, it had, I think, another 50-some kids eligible for speech services, so there's a lot happening in that department. Previously, I talked about at the workshop how if we do different things, we probably could access more money through the special ed formula depending on where we're at. So last year, about this time, we asked the state where we were in special ed funding, because there's this floor, and then there's, once you're above the floor, you get additional money depending on the programs that it's generated. So we, whenever we added a program, we added that with the co-op, through the co-op, so that they could tuition bill us all they want, but we were still under the floor. We were about $600,000 below the floor, where we had to spend that much money just to gain one more dollar of special ed money. So, through different things and kind of looking at, they have a special ed what-if model where you can kind of play with what your budget projection is in transportation to see where you land in that funding mechanism. Are we still below the floor, or are we going to get above the floor? So at the last workshop, I talked about how it looks like we're going to be above the floor if we do some different shifting and adding of staff to help with our special ed programming. You asked me to double-check those numbers with the state, and my controller and I did that. So he did give our blessing, but he did caution us on our transportation estimate, because that seemed a little high compared to prior years. What was in our projection was just flat-out budget, and at the end of the year, all the school districts have to look at their transportation funding or budget expenditures, and you either have to allocate your transportation costs either by the number of routes you do or the number of miles that you drive. So depending on the special ed miles, the gen ed miles, depending on where that lands determines how you can allocate the transportation expenditures. So if one year you're traveling a lot to Fairbowl or the cities for different things, care and treatment, that can help, more miles in specialized transportation where more costs would go there. If you're not going as far and your general ed miles are more than your specialized miles, then that transportation shifts to gen ed funding. So, was just a little more conservative on how that budget might land for special ed funding, but based on the needs that the coordinators are seeing in their programs, they would like to add two specialized teachers, seven full-time education support specialists, one-time education support specialist, two speech teachers, and then we're going to shift some level three programs that were in our co-op into the Monticello side of the budget, where that, that includes two specialized teachers, two behavior interventionists, and two education support specialists. So when we do that, we get above the floor, so that our deficit for '25-'26, instead of 3.5 million, at the end of this slide, so you'll see that it's about 2.3 million. So it's a little, it's still not great, but it's better than where it was initially projected. So those are the staffing changes that are being requested for next year. Normally, we anticipate about three certified retirements each year in the general fund. We still have a lot of contracts that are not settled, so there's still a lot of estimates based on budget parameters on where that might land for next year, but as those, as they get approved or settled, then we'll adjust our budget estimates as quickly as possible. Also, next year, we have a health insurance bid year, the Health Insurance Transparency Act. So that will happen over the summer, where we'll get our best and final bids around mid-July. So that's always unknown. We had some very good years where we, we only had no change in our health insurance premiums, three years of 0% change. I don't think a lot of districts in the state could have that, and whether we deserved it or not, we had some good years on health insurance premiums, so we'll probably see more likely a double-digit increase in our health insurance next year. Other expenses, our supplies and utilities could be anywhere from 0% to 10% increase. Utilities are always hard to estimate, you never know what kind of winter you're going to get in Minnesota. We also have our transportation contract that will end this year, and we have to renegotiate that going into next year. We don't anticipate borrowing short-term for cash flow needs. Our cash flow is pretty good, where we get 90% of our aid during the year and 10% after the year's over, and that our total expenditures could end up 0.5% under budget. Other assumptions, our fund balance policy is where we try to be with 8% to 16% of our general fund expenditures. We have committed severance fund balance that we've set aside for those obligations, so that'll quickly dwindle in the next couple of years as those phase out. Our carryover fund balances will be on hold and evaluated each year. We have the third, deferred, third-party billing funds, where we'll start utilizing that more in '24-'25. That can be used for special ed benefits or any one-time things. We're using some of that for our Little Mountain Special Ed rooms that we're adding next year programs, and that our fund balance for the next year will end up around 10% to 10.5%. One last final assumption is that we'll utilize our OPEB trust for any non-certified employee retiree insurance costs. We tend to use that trust for any contracts that don't have the sunset clause in their contracts. So what does that mean in our forecast? So in this chart, we have last year's, this year's, and the next two years. So the maroon reddish bar is our 8% fund balance target. So you can see we do pretty well this year and next year overall with our fund balance ending around that 10%, 10.5%, but then '25-'26 is where we do see that fiscal cliff kind of coming off with a lot of our expenditures exceeding our revenues coming in. And just a kind of summary of revenues and expenses for each year and what that looks like in the different fund balances, and where that fund balance is at the end, at the bottom row. So these assumptions help us guide and start our budget process. Our financial forecast is a lot of estimates upon estimates, and now we need to start fine-tuning those estimates as we start developing the budget for you to approve in June. So with your approval, that kind of helps that process. So, any questions on the assumptions?
When you were speaking about the concerns about, they made about the transportation dollars that you put in there, is that because we're going off a bid for a new contract or renegotiating?
For, trying to think what year it was in the, in the special ed what-if model. Last year's estimate was about 1.6, or the actual expenses that we had for the year was about 1.6 million, and I had the next year at 2.1 million, so that was a big jump for them to kind of raise a little concern, like, are you sure this is right? And so that was just based on actual budget. I didn't fine-tune it at all to see, you know, where have we been in the past for miles for gen ed versus miles for special ed? And I was trying to reach out to the transportation company to see for this year if they had any insight on how we were doing this year, on where we were routing kids versus last year. They didn't have a response quick enough for tonight's meeting.
So did you, are you changing that number in the budget?
So it's a little more, so at the work session in March, I thought we'd be about, what did I say, 1.7 million? But through different changes and estimates, '25-'26 years, looking at a budget reduction adjustment of 2.3 million. So still better, like I said, than 3.5, but still a big number to kind of align our budget.
Is that number clear once a contract's renegotiated with A-Bus Company?
It's, so with the special ed what-if, I mean, it depends on our final expenses. What are the miles that we drove? Like, I don't get that till July, after the year's over, of how much miles were gen ed, how many miles were special ed. So you can do it by routes, or you can do it by miles? I, I haven't done it by routes. I only did it one year with COVID, just because we had triple routes, and it was, it was a lot for miles. I mean, we had a lot of wrangling, I think, of, of students and bus routes, so it was just easier to do routes at that time.
Do these budget assumptions, obviously they must take into account our new school start times and the new transportation needs that we have in accordance with the new start times?
So in the forecast, it's just estimates, so 8% estimate.
Any other questions, any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
You know, the last time we've seen a budget shortfall in the area of 2.3 million, what types of actions were taken?
As far as what we did, or?
To balance the budget.
We reduced classroom teachers, we got rid of middle school activities, we, I think, got rid of our media specialists, or whether they were teachers or educational support specialists, there's a, a lot that I haven't, like, looked at recently to refresh my memory.
Do you remember how long ago that was?
Well, we were supposed to reduce going into this year, but because we had higher compensatory money, we didn't have to do that, so that was two years ago, two or three years ago.
Thank you.
And one of the things that we're doing right now is, across the buildings, principals are working with their departments and, and their teams, and we have started that process of freezing and looking at scrutinizing every budget piece that we do. So we're trying to get on the front end, hopefully, every, every, every dollar that you can dip into to not have that 2.3 budget realignment is, is going to be, you know, effort well-spent here now.
Can you talk a little bit about what would happen if we, if we go over? You know, if we, if we are not able to balance the budget, what happens?
Well, typically, I mean, as you saw in the other graph, I mean, we'll get about 7% in '25-'26 if we don't do anything. It just doesn't look good for credit ratings, if we need to go out for bonds or anything else, that you don't have a balanced budget. So it just makes that year even harder to do. So if you can balance your budget as you go, then it makes, as future years come, it's not as big of a cliff.
And if we do that too many times, we would be at risk of having the state come in with some type of oversight? Is that correct?
Yep. If you're at a minus, let's go to this, that blue, there we go, the purplish bar that's down, statutory operating debt is where your fund balance is a minus 2.5%. that's down, statutory operating debt is where your fund balance is a minus 2.5%. So if that fund balance gets below that, that's where the state comes in and tells you how you're going to balance your budget.
Which we don't want to do. Any additional discussion from the board? This is obviously maybe the third time that we've been presented with a lot of these numbers in the recent last couple of weeks, so this is not the first time any of us have heard this. We do have to approve the budget assumptions that Ms. Burkholder has laid out for us tonight or not. So moved by Jeff Hegley to approve them as presented, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the budget assumptions as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Budget assumptions are approved 6-0. Now, moving into the capital budget, we're also going to hear from Ms. Burkholder.
Yeah, so every year we approve our capital budget. We get just over a million dollars in capital funds to use towards curriculum, technology, activities, and other instructional needs. So we brought to you the list to preview at the work session. We have curriculum and tech and activities up on top as kind of what goes first in our capital budget. And then we try to look at the highest needs at each of the buildings. So at the high school, we have classroom replacement and welding equipment under that building. At Little Mountain, like I mentioned earlier, remodeling some space for the additional of special ed programming, utilizing capital and third-party billing funds. Eastview, looking at some key fobs to look at a door entrance through the main office. At middle school, doing some renovation in the STEM lab area to better utilize that space for instructional purposes. And then Pinewood, remodeling the cafeteria so there's better flow and ADA accessible for that area as well. There will be some usage between capital and LTFM funds as we dive more into those projects so we can balance that budget and that'll help us also with the Little Mountain space to know what we can use capital versus third-party billing money.
Can you talk about the yellow shaded areas?
So when we're...Through this capital process, we start early, like November and December, but through discussions when we realized that we were going to add some special ed programming at Little Mountain, that request kind of came late and so we were waiting for numbers to put in the capital budget, but we know that's their number-one priority. So we're going to make it work. It's just a matter of figuring out how some of these will fall under third-party or long-term facility maintenance funding so that it all works out within our budget.
Do you have an estimate, just a rough estimate, for that remodel and the bathroom?
I don't.
Nope.
Probably similar to the STEM lab renovation, but I don't know for sure.
And then for the $2 set aside, you know what that is up here? Do you want to maybe explain that to those that don't know?
So the $2 set aside was new last year, so that is to set aside for menstrual products in grades four through 12 and then also the Narcan dosage that we need at each school building.
Any additional discussion from the board?
I would just add one thing that I love that you said during the work session. It just helped frame my mind here as when you look at capital and you budget for long-term, it's good to think of capital in periods of time. You know, it's really hard to, you know, do exact...equal representation to every building every year, but over time, that is one of the goals of the capital process. And as you can see, you have some things on here this year that really making an emphasis towards the instruction and we want to get our best, you know, programs and some of our programs that maybe can be leaders or programs that are falling behind, we need to give them that continuum of service that we're looking for. And so like that one, that shaded yellow, you know, at Little Mountain, truly providing a continuum of service that we haven't had at Little Mountain. We were actually busing students to Pinewood and so for this, this is a pretty cool opportunity for us to be able to build a continuum of services for families that I think is going to go a long ways. I know in the past, we've split up families, so you have some students who go to special education at Pinewood and some that stay in the community school at Little Mountain. And now we're going to be able to offer a full continuum of service at Little Mountain and that's a big deal for us, just like all these are. But you also have to stay in the game to see that everything that is done over the course of time is a big deal. The things that we do in here are really important to us. We wish that we could do something, whether it's capital or budget-wise, every year, but you can't. And so it's looking at things over the course of time and trying to make that balance.
Any additional discussion?
This was also one of the items on our meetings today at the capital, long-term facility maintenance and the caps we run to and what we can't do and try to take the handcuffs off the school so we have more options and more opportunity to do what the school needs.
I was encouraged because it sounded like there was some support across the aisles, so we'll just have to wait for the end of the...Do you want to explain to those that may not know what we're talking about?
Yeah, so we have our long-term facility maintenance and there's a cap on what we get, I think 380.
$380 per pupil is what we get.
Pupil is when we get a set amount of money. And essentially what you run into is that if you don't take care of rebuilding in time, you create more problems down the road and exacerbates the cost. So one of the meetings today was to talk about how can you raise that dollar amount that we give from the state so we don't have to keep robbing from...try to do things, what can we actually allocate and become more efficient at how we're spending our money and that long-term solutions that are planned out better. So we're not just doing a Band-Aid approach over and over and over because we're limited to what we can do based on some statutes.
And we have...A couple of our buildings are quite old, 1957, 1964. So if that was your house, you would keep up with it to try to prevent the maintenance issues. Tina has a snow globe illustration.
Yep, so for long-term facility maintenance, when it was first introduced and approved, it's not my analogy, somebody else came up with it, but it's very clever where think of your school building in a snow globe and if you tipped it over and shook it, whatever fell out wasn't eligible for long-term facility maintenance funding. Whatever stayed intact of the building was what was allowed for long-term facility maintenance funding.
So bricks and mortar?
Yep, so desks falling from the building or...
HVAC systems, that sort of thing.
Computers, yep.
So any additional discussion from the rest of the board on this? So we need to approve the capital budget as presented by Ms. Burkholder. So that's an action item.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the capital budget as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Capital budget is approved 6-0. Thank you. Moving on to the safe and healthy culture, we have Mr. Rob Daniker from Director of Human Resources going to discuss one policy with us this evening.
Chair Zebra, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We do have only one policy on the agenda for tonight for action and that is policy number 424. In the draft, in the model policy from MSBA, it's called licensed status. We did amend it in our policy committee to be more specific in the title by adding the term Pelsby in front of it. But the purpose of this policy is to ensure that qualified teachers are employed by the school district and to fulfill its duty to ascertain the licensure status of its teachers. A school board that employs a teacher who does not hold a valid teaching license or permit places itself at a risk for a reduction in state aid. This policy does not negate a teacher's duty and responsibility to maintain a current invalid teaching license. So the policy articulates the mutual responsibilities both of the district and also the individual teacher to ensure that proper licenses are secured. And so this is an action item for tonight.
Is there any discussion from the board? So this is the second reading of policy number 424 and we need to move it. Motion made by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving policy 424, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. And finding that our agenda is complete, we are adjourned at 7:09. Next meeting is Monday, April 1st at 5:00 p.m. Thank you for coming, everyone.